It is June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call vote, I'm sorry, our newest member, congratulations. You're present.
Present.
Ellen Mar, present.
Chris Plex, present.
Jack Creighton, present.
Paul Grady, present, and it starts with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And for those of you that aren't just welcome, and residents can watch this meeting on Cohasset Facebook Live streaming or Cohasset one four three. An open meeting, and now we'll open up the public comments.
My name is James Bonus, here on behalf of the Open Food Truck. My partner, Serena McLaughlin, would be here tonight because she's at the last South Shore Community Center meeting, she serves as the treasurer there. I would just like to ask, so if you would consider putting the agenda, putting the fourth transient membership that we requested on next month's agenda.
Have you submitted anything to Tracy?
I have, I have been present for the last meeting. My first one, I didn't know exactly how the clock starts and how they had it. But hoping that we can make it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, public things, we can't discuss what you bring up in a public thing unless it's already on the agenda. But if you request to go on the next meeting's agenda, that's fine.
Alright.
Welcome. Do you have any comments? Alright, so, we're going to move to board reorganization. And again, officially, I'd like to welcome my newest member, David Farag. So every time this time of year after an election, then we reorganize the board to votes in, and I'd like to open, by quote, with a recommendation. Served as vice chair last year, but I would like, I'm not a firm believer in seniority rules all the time. And I think a person that has experience and has attention to detail and has a love of the town sitting right next to me, and I would like to make a motion to nominate Ellen Mar as our next chair. We'll do a roll call vote on that, Mr. Prag.
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
I was just getting comfortable over here.
Musical chairs.
But I'm still next to Ellen, so.
Right.
Congratulations, Ellen.
Thank you, Jack. Close to my heart. Okay.
Oh. Well, he's got my name on it and everything.
Okay, well, thank you, Paul, thank you, everybody, for your support, and I, I hope I can live up to my predecessor in terms of her leadership and how she conducted the meetings and her attention to detail, I'm fortunate, I do have a little experience having been chair on the school committee, so it's, it's not totally new territory for me, so at this point, I would like to open up the nominations for vice chair of the Cohasset Select Board.
Nominate Paul Grady.
Second.
Second, excellent, okay, so Paul Grady's been nominated and seconded, and can I have a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Plex?
Chris Plex, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Farag, aye.
So, Mr. Grady, you will continue on as vice chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and the final position is that of clerk, and it's, I'll just define it a little bit, the clerk it's the clerk of the board or a secretary on other boards, primarily is the conduit of minutes. Our scribe Tracy Connors will send you minutes and you'll just approve them or make a slight correction or whatever, and keep us on track on approving minutes, and she does all the hard work. So it's really a review position, there's certain things during the course of the year that the clerk will read aloud, like, I forget there was one, my second meeting I did, it was like four pages long, the bond notices, licenses renewal, things like that, so that's kind of the heavy lifting for the clerk, so.
And it can be a tedious job, and because of that, I'd like to nominate my friend David Farag.
Okay, so we have a nomination for David Farag as the clerk by Jack Creighton, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Plex.
Chris Plex, aye.
Paul Grady, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Okay, excellent, so we are now officially reconstituted. That's always kind of the new person's job to be the clerk, I was the clerk last year, my first year. Okay, so moving on, I think these are yours. We have the Cohasset Triathlon update, and Mr. Burnett is here with, yeah, would you please come up?
Congratulations, everyone.
I thank you.
Chief is, I believe, with us as well, Chief Quigley.
Name and address, please.
My name is Bill Burnett, I live at twenty-eight Mohawk Way. We are here simply for a brief update on the triathlon. Before I go there, I've lived in town for twenty-five years, started this race fifteen years ago, and, and we all love Cohasset and what it offers, but this truly showcases what, all about the town, that we have over six hundred people who've never been to Cohasset before doing this race, so it's bringing new people to our town, supporting the community, and the business is on Main Street. Everyone comes out to help with volunteering, it just is an incredible day, so I'm thrilled to bring it back, next Sunday, June the twenty-third is the race day. Pack and Pickup will actually be in this room the day before on the twenty-second. Thank you to Tracy and the manager's office to help with that. Everything is rolling just fine, but frankly, I don't know if Chief has any comments on, from a safety perspective, but we've met along with Fire Department, our master, and I think we're ready to go.
Yeah, everything's going smoothly, we are very used to this, this operational plan. With, you know, we're dealing with the, with the, with the churches, with the neighbors. We have a command post coming in early on Sunday morning, and I think we'll be in good shape, everything's falling into place.
It is one of the premier events in town.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's quite spectacular to see, you know, what happens.
It's really, really fun, and I hope, I hope everyone can come down to, yeah, say thank you for saying that, yeah.
And I'd like to say thank you so much, Bill, not just what you do for the kids, for the town, your dedication.
Thank you.
The enthusiasm you bring to everything you come to.
I know, and I think, I think about that, you know, why did we start this race, it truly was, I believe that this town could not only support an event like this, but it brings out the best of the community, I, it's kind of been my personality, so I'm, I love it, and I think it's great for, it's great for everybody in in our community, I believe.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. By the way, we, we're, we're Cohasset residents, signed up to be on the starting line as well, so. So.
That's good.
Well, how many of them have signed up to be on the finish line?
So, yeah, exactly.
Again, I'd like to second that, you do an excellent job, you bring out the best of Cohasset's very ample community spirit.
Thank you.
And you're right, Cohasset is a uniquely beautiful spot to have.
We're so, so lucky, and if there's, by the way, if anyone who's listening would like to be part of it and behind the scenes, put on a volunteer shirt, come on down, help, I mean, we, there's, there's, you can connect with, with me via our website. You can get a t-shirt, these are all, yes, exactly, so thank you all for the support, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Compses and little, little bit went, right?
Exactly, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, next we have a continued public hearing for Vindham LLC DBA Golf Tavern with a change of license. This is carried over from May twenty-first, I believe, a continuation. Yeah, 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 from the twenty-first, Chris, am I required to read the notice again?
No, you're, you're, you're just a continuation.
Okay, so the hearing is already open, so who do we have here from the petitioners?
The only I might want to have on the record, Mr. Fragg has just joined you, he just needs to put on the record that he's actually watched the last minute, the last session, and is able to.
Okay.
Or, or not.
I can state it for the record, that from the last hearing, I watched him up to date and I've seen the materials about the game, so.
Okay. Great, thank you, thank you, Chris. Okay, come up, please. Sure. Kevin, should we turn the microphone around, do you think?
Yeah, if you guys want, if you speak loud enough, it should pick it up.
Sure.
Okay, you'll be fine, okay.
I'll try to speak loud. Congratulations, buddy.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
So, good evening, members of the Select Board, my name is Attorney David Henig, and I'm here on behalf of Vindhan LLC, doing business as The Golf Tavern, and also with me is Mr. Hashraj Thakur and Mr. Dinesh Thakur. Now, since the last time that the Thakurs have appeared before the board, this board recommended that they observe a waiting period of a certain amount of time to assess the interest in the public's interest in The Golf Tavern obtaining a full alcohol license, compared to the current beer and wine license that they have now. Now, since the last hearing, that the Thakurs have received significant public support from the residents of Cohasset, including multiple five-star online reviews, and the signatures of patrons who support The Golf Tavern and want to see this facility succeed and are interested in having the facility serve all alcohol as opposed to only beer and wine. The popularity continues to grow for this establishment since it's been open. However, well, as people continue to learn that the facility has some of the most state-of-the-art technology for shot tracers, games for individuals to play, and the fun-friendly environment that's offered at The Golf Tavern. However, though, this may not always be the case for The Golf Tavern if they're unable to operate with a full alcohol license. And it's ultimately because The Golf Tavern currently, the way it stands, is at a competitive disadvantage when we compare with eleven other known facilities that are indoor golf facilities within a twenty-minute drive from Cohasset, roughly, that have a all-alcohol license, and to name some of them. Banners Golf in Boston, Five Iron Boston, Patriots Play Foxborough, Top Golf in Canton, Golf Lounge in Peabody, Ex Golf in Wapole, Champions Indoor Golf in the Pine Hills, Ex Golf Hanover, Golf Lounge in Braintree, I Golf in Pembroke, and T Up Tap Room in Worcester. Each and every one of these facilities, all eleven of them, are competitors to The Thakurs and The Golf Tavern, and they all have a full alcohol license, putting The Golf Tavern at a significant disadvantage. We know of at least five different events that have been scheduled. And as well, we do have photographs as well of some of the other facilities showing that they have full licenses and full bars available, this right here is Ex Golf in Hanover. I Golf in Pembroke, I won't go through all of them, I'll only show a couple. Finally, Braintree, Golf Lounge in Braintree. See the extensive bar that's available for their facilities. So the five, five known events were booked online with The Golf Tavern, and when the patrons found out that they only serve beer and wine at the facility, they ended up canceling their reservations. This included a birthday party event with at least ten individuals, a Boston chapter organization called Crew that was supposed to bring fifteen customers, a neighborhood event with twelve customers, family birthday, ten customers, the parents' night out with twenty potential customers. They all left and likely went to a different facility rather than staying with a local facility in Cohasset. The The Golf Tavern is the type of business that Cohasset and this town wants to support and should welcome with open arms. It's a family-owned and operated business with a father and son who are present here with me today. They've informed me that they're interested and are beginning the process of applying for a minority business enterprise certification through the Commonwealth Supplier Diversity Office, and the town should welcome and support business owners and professionals of all backgrounds. When local businesses do well, so does the community. Revenue tends to stay in the community, and that strengthens the business and provides a community tax base for the town. And without this type of license, we're losing customers on a daily basis that are going to the other facilities that are within twenty minutes of The Golf Tavern. The proposed manager, Dinesh, sitting on my right, sixty-seven years old, he has a master's degree in business administration from the BK School of Business in India. He has his undergraduate degree in textiles engineering. From his resume, I have copies of their resume, if anybody's interested in seeing them, he's an extensive background in textiles industry, including eighteen years of owning his own textile factory. Since coming to the United States in two thousand nineteen, Dinesh has worked in property, hotel management. He's the majority owner of the business and expects to be on-premise at all times. And he's tips trained and receives training through SafeServe, Algaire Awareness. In the five months that the facility's been open, they've been serving beer and wine and haven't received any complaints or violations or fines or anything of the sort. Hashraj Thakur on my left, he's an environmental engineer with Massachusetts DEP in Lakeville. And not only are these individuals extremely qualified to manage and operate the business and serve all kinds of alcohol responsibly, but they're active members in the community and have been involved in multiple charity events, including sponsoring events in Cohasset for Carriageway Nursery, the Rotary Club of Cohasset, as well as events in, at the Situate Library and Hingham Elementary School. So they have put before the board that they intend to offer half-price for seniors in the morning and have been doing that successfully. It's been a popular time for the seniors, a lot of seniors come in during that time, and they've also hosted the high school girls' golf team at a discounted rate to offer them some additional help and benefits in coming to the facility. This is the type of business the town should support in every way. As the Thakurs are responsible and active members who give back to the community. The Golf Tavern is the only facility in Cohasset that serves experienced practicing golfers with advanced shot tracing technology, as well as new golfers, the opportunity to learn and explore the game of golf. But, again, they're at a significant competitive disadvantage if they're unable to serve all alcohol, when there's eleven known facilities nearby that all have the same license, so for these reasons, we're respectfully requesting that this board issue The Golf Tavern an all-alcohol annual license.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, nice to see you gentlemen again, I'll just point a clarification, Top Golf in Canton, the place that Patriots play, this place is not twenty minutes away.
No, so.
Yeah.
None of them.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I, I drive by Top Golf every, every day, twice a day, so.
Those are the facilities we actually visited.
Yeah, Hanover Braintree.
Started our thing, and all of this have full alcohol, and then when we envisioned our facility and when we look at the competitors and all around the state, this is something, so, that, I'm sorry, yeah.
So, I apologize, and not twenty minutes away, but.
That's, that's all right, I understand the point, so any questions, we'll start, David, you have any comments or questions? Okay.
Braintree's competition, Boston is not.
No.
Yeah, just, you, you, you know, but that doesn't influence me at all, I think it's important that Cohasset has certainly enough people in the next two or three towns to support your business. Doesn't seem like you need a huge number of people, and I'm, I'm assuming the half-price doesn't, for the doesn't apply to the girls' high school golf team, for your liquor.
Assuming. So, Boston is not the competition, Braintree is the competition.
Braintree is.
Uh, Hanover Ex Golf is a very big competition, I Go Pembroke is a very big competition, and all of this is.
I'm a golf golfer, I know how far we'll.
And we have seen, actually, signatures, we have, from the petitions, we have, we I'm not seeing repeat customers because many of them, when they came and asked, for the first time, we said that, no, we do not serve it. So, they were not rude, and I think people in Cohasset are very nice, they were not rude to walk away straight out, but we don't see those faces again.
I think my, my question is, are you a function first with the liquor license, or are you gonna devolve into a bar with some games often?
It's, it's not intended at all that this ever becomes just a, a bar facility, it's, it's a state-of-the-art indoor golf facility that would like to have the option to offer all alcohol so that the potential customers are not turned away solely for that reason.
That would, that would be my only concern, just.
Because Braintree is the same facility, what we use, Trackman, so if somebody can get high nudes with Trackman in Braintree, they might prefer going there from Cohasset, only if it's twenty-minute drive rather than coming to us, because we did get a lot of inquiries that people are asking for martinis and high nudes, and it's not, people are asking for a lot of things, but people have their own drink, people like to drink certain things, and when they are out on golfing, they have a particular drink in mind they would like to enjoy. So when we tell them that we don't have those options, or they can limit their choices, they don't appreciate it.
We have what, how many licenses left, full liquor licenses?
Two. Two full? Two full.
Two full, yes.
I mean, we granted you beer and wine.
It was told by the board last time if town wanted it.
We did, we granted it back then, I remember that we granted beer and wine, you know, and, you know, I kind of second Paulie's concern, it's a busy parking lot, you've got the other restaurant. We're really limited in what we have, we tried to explain that the last time, is what we have for liquor licenses. Again, we have restaurants, and that in and of itself, if we had ten liquor licenses like we have, I'd still be concerned about the location because it's a busy parking lot, it's a shopping lot, you have the stop and shop there, you have a liquor store right down the street, right in the same parking lot, you have the new restaurant opening up that's a transferable liquor license where the Peng Shui used to be. So, you can see where, you know, there's some inherent danger, people aren't taken care of.
Can I say something? I understand your concern. We have been in business now for five months, we know how to make sure that safety is ensured. We are making sure that people who come to our place and establishment are, first off, are not coming as a bar place, they do not come to Course Tavern only to drink, they do not come to Course Tavern as a place where they can have a lot of alcohol, this is a place which is a convenience for golfers, and given the situation, we have people, or if somebody wants to drink and get fresh, they probably tend to do that on beer as well, but we want to make sure that we know how I'm going to stop our customers if they have a more influence on alcohol, and fortunately, that has not happened.
And, and also, just the, the facility is, the patrons that are there are primarily playing golf, and it's a physical activity, and based on the setup on the inside, the course would be able to see whether somebody was getting physically intoxicated, you know, they would start hitting golf balls erratically, at that point, they would be able to potentially cut off somebody or exit to leave the facility. Or if necessary, you know, call proper authorities or whoever may be needed to reduce or eliminate any type of risks.
Sounds the call, you can see that any bar, someone's intoxicated, so that doesn't go too far.
Well, we would, we would.
And the thing is, again, my concerns are, it's a busy lot. You have people shopping elderly, you have residential above that. And I am concerned, again, with, I'm, I'm going back to what we're trying to, you guys are a welcome addition to Cohasset, but I'm just thinking that people are coming in to play golf, they're coming in to play golf, if they want a cold beer or something like that, and, which is well and good, or a glass of wine, but you said it yourself, and you said it too, they're coming in to play golf. Alright, so, we have, again, two full liquor licenses left, and, but you see my concern here, and, and you know, I'm, I'm happy with a beer and wine license that we granted already, I'm gonna be quite honest with you.
Can I say something? People come to golf, but as I very rightly pointed, people who come to golf like to have their choice of beverage. People come to golf to our place out of these repeat customers, which I said, I'm not saying repeat customers now. Because if I would like to have a high noon, or if I would like to have a old-fashioned, and if I can just have fifteen minutes in Hanover, play golf and drink what I would like to drink, I would go there. It's not a long time before we see that we are not able to sustain. And I'm saying that very politely because we like to help the community, we are already doing half-price in the morning for our seniors. We are already giving discounted rates to high school teams, we are doing summer camps, which we are going to cut down the prices, not make money off it. We are doing charity events, and we are giving sponsorships to all the local communities as our way to give back. If this goes on, we won't be able to do business where we can support the community, we won't be able to do the business where we can sustain. Golf is one part, events is another part, we cannot just rely on golf and daily numbers, because summer, when golf courses are open, people prefer, people prefer going on golf courses, and we are sustaining on events, as we rightly pointed out, we got five events canceled because people were not able to get their drinks, and those are the only ones we have in emails. We get so many phone calls and inquiries, people want to celebrate birthdays, and these are family functions, these are not some stuff where people are just going to go wild, these are family functions, where people want to come with their family, host a birthday party, we got a call from a Cohasset teacher. She wanted to host a birthday, but when we told her that, no, we do not have a full alcohol, she very politely told us that her friends have certain drinks they like to drink, and she said, no, her wife wanted to throw a fortieth birthday party for her husband. She said, no, because her husband likes to drink old-fashioned, it's his fortieth birthday, and we won't be able to serve that. So, events like this are already going out of our opportunity, and we are losing all this valuable business.
We know, again, we know of five for sure that have been canceled, but we don't know of any other cancellations that are word of mouth, or you know, that didn't make it as far as actually booking and canceling, they, they could have just spoken to members in the golf community and and heard that there's other facilities nearby that do offer all alcohol, and then just choose to go to a different place.
I would say this, I respect and admire anybody starting a business, right? I respect, admire, but you don't, trying to help you with beer and wine licenses. Again, my concern, and this is me personally, is that that parking lot could become a smash-up derby, you're gonna have liquor license at the pizza establishment. You have a liquor license at the store, and you have a liquor license another twenty-five steps away at, at, at The Golf Tavern. So, that's where I have my doubts about it, and again, I think at the last hearing, we did try to inform you of those concerns. I should, I want to say, it's, again, I, to a degree, my heart goes out to you, this, this is how I'm feeling, but it's a tough call. It, it's, we're in a, we're in a kind of a tough place with two liquor licenses there, we have another restaurant that's opening up in the harbor. It's bringing business, and, yeah, I can't, I can't beat enough how much I admire what you guys do. I'm just having a tough time is centralizing those licenses, and that leaves us with one license to grant.
I agree with everything you said, so, it's a lot of liquor in all the place, my preference for the full liquor license.
So it's a lot of liquor in all the place, my preference for the full liquor license is that those go to restaurants. Because restaurants are notoriously difficult to make profitable, so the full alcohol license gives them an opportunity to be profitable. I think you raise a good point about nearby alternatives that do have full liquor licenses though, so as I think about allocating these. Uh, I don't know of other requests that are out there for the full liquor licenses. And considering that we have two available and we also have beer and wine licenses available. Okay, so if we grant this as a swap, full liquor for beer and wine. One and one left. We know there's a restaurant going in on the harbor. That's likely going to be interested in the full alcohol license. So I, I, I guess I'm still on the fence, but I could, I could see an argument for granting this and like. The real competition that exists in other places, I, I'm just a little hesitant because of what you brought up. It's a lot of liquor licenses and full liquor licenses, if you consider the liquor store of the liquor license, I know it's not serving. Uh, it's a lot of alcohol in one parking.
David?
I just had a quick question, uh, as far as your patrons, what is the highest volume of patrons that you get during the day? Vis a vis the week versus weekend?
Uh, at the time or throughout number of patrons in a day?
Yeah, but what are the highest times you get the most patrons?
Most of the patrons are afternoon. Afternoon and we are concerned people don't generally go a lot of drinking in the afternoon, most busy we get is afternoon, we close at night. We don't stay open late, our last call goes at around eight, people generally start wrapping up by eight, eight fifteen. Uh, most popular is Sunday afternoon and Saturday afternoon. Uh, again, we do not have a lot of customers in the evening, it's a walk-in, if they come, they come. But afternoons and early evenings are very popular, you know, rather than late nights or later in the evening.
I'll make a comment later.
Okay, yeah, so I, I have a few, um, a, a few comments to make and, and, um. You know, I think you demonstrated the need by evidence of the five events that were canceled. By a hundred and twenty signatures on your petition for people, by the anecdotal evidence you presented. You know, of phone calls, of cancellations, of people not booking because you don't have a full alcohol license. Um, and you know, one of the criteria we have learned in granting alcohol licenses. Is, is their community need and I think that, um, your establishment is a unique. Uh, event place that we, it's not a restaurant and it's not a bar. It, it, it's a place to go do an activity and have a social component to it. You might find with an al- alcohol license that the social component becomes bigger than the golf component, which is the intent of. Your business, but that's for you to manage, um, in terms of that, it's, it's, I don't think you envision and we certainly don't. Desire another bar room, you know, that's kinda not where, where we are. Um, and, and short of not having any other license applications on the table and none in the foreseeable future. I, who knows when the harbor projects are gonna come about? Um, I think for, for me, you've demonstrated the, the need for it. I echo my colleagues' concerns about safety, about the adjacencies of. Another, you know, full service restaurant, a liquor store, different component. Um, they are moving right next to you, which causes concern in terms of carry in, how would you manage that? How would you patrol and police anyone attempting to carry in alcohol from the liquor store that's gonna be next door?
So our reception desk is once right in front of our door.
Okay.
People generally only bring golf clubs if they're bringing. We have an open concept that people, if they bring anything, even like we have patrons who sometimes bring in their sandwiches and we told them we saw food. We have thirteen items including great pizzas and egg rolls, uh, and they don't, we don't allow any outside food or drinks. So it's, everything is very visible, we have staff, we monitor, it's, we are not always standing behind the reception or behind the bar. We walk around because people constantly needs input and help with simulators.
Would you, would you, um, excuse them from the facility as well, have them leave if you observe them?
Of course, yes, we cannot, yeah. Uh, we actually have, uh, very strict conditions where people actually asked us, can they bring their own. So drinks because we don't serve them and we were like, no, we cannot, that is a part of, uh, violation on our license and we cannot allow that. And that's why it's been over five months, we don't have any violation, we don't have any complaints, not from the residents above or anybody around. I consider the factor of safety as you brought out in the parking lot, but our working time is very limited. We get busy during afternoons, people don't get that drunk in the afternoons, we don't tend to stay open after nine. We don't tend to start people drinking at eight, people are coming for golf, but as I brought it out, we have a competition. And this is the requirement.
So you said you had a number of, uh, petitions from customers?
Yes.
Now you've printed up copies of them.
These are the originals.
So I hope you fellows see where at least my concerns are.
Um, I said, thank you.
I'm very sympathetic with, uh. Paul's, my colleague, Paul's concerns and we did go over them quite extensively last time. But I think Ellen brings up a good point, which is we do have two licenses outstanding. It's been public note, knowledge, but this is what's going on. I think people who are thinking of doing it have had a fair chance to know that. Um, something's going on with these two licenses and one will be going in probably, um, one may go. But on the other hand, I think it's a unique service and I think it is a lot local. I don't think people are gonna drive from Braintree down here to, to there, but I think Cohasset. Um, would greatly enjoy that, there are a lot of golfers in there, Situate and Hangum. Um, and I know there's a similar facility, uh, in Marshfield. Um, but I'm not sure you're really in competition, that's a full fledged driving range. You know, I'm, I'm kind of, I've been on the fence, I've been trying to listen to all the points and, and I'm, I'm kind of. I, I'm kind of a little bit sympathetic to doing that, I, I, I think they've ma- made a pretty good point and.
After seeing the record and listening to the comments by the board, everyone here. I, I think that the applicant has shown that they can handle. Hopefully up to this point, they've shown they can handle the business and service of alcohol and. Going to the next step, they, in the last five months, they haven't had any, any marks against them, they haven't had any violations or anything like that. The type of business they have is very unique, that's different from typical restaurant or lunch place or bar. As you've heard, they close by eight, uh, most of your problems that you do get in restaurants or bars are after ten or after midnight. You know, nothing good happens after midnight, so, uh, those are when you're gonna have the bigger problems, I think the police could attest to that, so. Uh, because of the times that they do their service and, and the, the unique type it is, I think they've shown the ability to do it. I don't see much of a hindrance in allowing that to move forward.
I, I would just add, but I'm certainly leaning yes at this point, we've, we've had some time pass where if someone else were interested in the license, they could have come forth. And said, no, no, I'm interested in the license, we've got two available. One of those likely going to end up at a restaurant on the harbor, but. I think it would be a waste for us to have liquor licenses sitting around, a strong business looking for it and just held it for something else.
Alright, so a- any other comments? No, alright, so, yes, yes, sir?
Uh, may I spend two minutes with this board?
Uh, y- yes, your name and address, please?
My name is Ken Ingber, I N G B E R, I live in sixteen New Driftway in Situate. Um, I've lived in Cohasset for twenty-nine years before moving to Situate, raised my family here. My wife had, uh, her office for thirty-five years here, we have very strong roots in Cohasset. And, um, I, if you don't mind me reading this, I'm hoping to keep this to two minutes.
Okay.
Uh, we wanted to celebrate our anniversary and after looking at a number of sports related venues, we rented Golf Tavern. And I want to briefly tell you about our experience, uh, and how it relates to this application. As you've heard from others, we had a lot of choices for venues, including a number of indoor golf and other indoor sports businesses on the South Shore. We chose Golf Tavern for several reasons, it's a local business, it's a new business and we like the idea of helping to launch a new business. And it was very convenient to our guests, both who live, uh, living in Cohasset. The one drawback, and you, you've heard the thought, one drawback was that they only have a beer and wine license. We wanted to extend our hospitality to our guests by offering a full bar. Uh, and we couldn't do that right here under these circumstances. In the end, balancing those things off, we agreed to go to Golf Tavern. Despite that drawback, but I promise you, it was significant one, not, not because people wanted to get tipsy, but because we. My wife and I wanted to extend hospitality to our guests. From the beginning, we were treated very well by Hershen and Nash. We were warmly welcomed, they were attentive to our needs, they demonstrated experience and confidence with hospitality. They promised to handle all aspects of the event and they did so in every respect. During the event itself, they showed attentiveness to detail and the overall feel of the place, they were watching at all times, they were good at it. Uh, I tell you this because a liquor license ought to be in the hands of serious, watchful, responsible people who know what they're doing. Hershen and Nash demonstrated to me that, that they are those kind of people. I would hope that the town, well, has to feel the same way my wife and I do in supporting this local business and approving the upgraded licenses. Uh, this likely will take away some of the inevitable struggle with the new business. And let, let me say, uh, apart from my prepared remarks, the, the comment that, uh, I think Paul, you were primarily mentioning. You were comparing the, the necessity of a full liquor license to the restaurant, you were leaning to give that or not. I think it, it maybe looks unfair in the sense that everybody knows that a restaurant really needs a, a liquor license to succeed. I think the pitch that they're making is, I'm persuaded by it because I had to make that decision myself, is that a Golf Tavern also. Uh, uh, having an all alcohol license may very well be the difference between success and failure. And so the restaurants, everybody knows about the model of an indoor golf facility, less known. And so you, you, you wanna be, uh, an open mind, I think, to that.
Oh, okay, thank, thank you, I think, I think we've got the gist of, of your glowing recommendation. So we appreciate your comments and your time in coming here to, to support these local business owners. So, um, at this point, um, I'd like a motion. Um, for a change of the license classification from wines and malt beverages to all alcohol beverage license under Mass General Law. Chapter one thirty-eight, section twelve, uh, be granted to, um. Vintan LLC, am I saying that properly? Vintan? Uh, LLC DBA Golf Tavern, um, at this, at this time. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, Chris, we don't need a roll call, do we? We do need a roll call, okay. A regular vote?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, so, um, check, second, okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, four to one. Um, so thank you, congratulations on your business, um, and, um. We hope for great things for you and for the town of Cohasset.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the, um, Board of Assessor, um. Abatement ta- to abate the taxes for one thirty-five King Street for the fourth quarter in twenty twenty-five vote. Chris, do you wanna talk about that or is?
So.
Or Michelle, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine, Alan.
Okay, um, so the, um, the Board of Assessors is asking the select board. Um, give permission to abate the taxes now that it's under town ownership. Um, the town did acquire the property April first, this is one thirty-five King Street, the home of the new, obviously some fire annex. Um, they're asking that you give permission to bring it to the Board of Assessors for, for the abatement of. It's approximately about thirty-eight hundred dollars from the time we go into till the end of the fiscal year. Uh, and then moving forward becomes town property and then there'll be no more tax bills generally.
April, May, June for three months. So probably what we didn't factor in though, or the, is the annual tax loss. Which is a little shy of sixteen thousand, right? Your lips to God's ears, right? Is there any conversation about this?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay, all those in favor? Sorry, I just need a, I shouldn't bring a purple pen to sign documents.
I brought, I just brought twenty of them.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, okay, uh. Next up, uh, is a conversation with Chief, quickly, parking regulations for electrical vehicle charging spaces.
Hi, uh, good evening, I'm just asking that the board consider, um, amending our parking regulations. To include prohibiting parking of, uh, conventional, uh, motor vehicles in the town-owned. Electric vehicle spaces, we have some in the town parking lot, also at the library, the school, uh, town hall. Uh, we wanna restrict that parking tool for what it's meant for and we're getting complaints mostly in the town lot. That people with, um, you know, regular gasoline vehicles are using those spots as regular parking spots. And they're sort of premium spots as well because, you, due to the nature of, you know, having to be hooked up to electric, they're close to. You know, usually the buildings, so, um, people are taking advantage of our lack of regulation. So I'd ask that the board consider, um, what I submitted.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve that.
Okay.
Chair, if I can just add one caveat, so, so there's a high concentration, it is the library and it's, it's causing some friction. And they were put there for a reason because there was the, they know, uh, there's a lot of patrons to use them, so I, I, the, the concern was the library. Accepted them there under the premise that they could be used by non-electric vehicles when needed for capacity.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if, if those people started to be ticketed there, I think, because it's a tight lot, on the, on the, on the top side is four spaces. Um, because they have programs sometimes at night and, and, so, and, and again, there's a, I, I think if, if the board would consider. Like leaving that top lot out, um, again, unless the chief has some other concerns. Uh, the other one, in the main lot, there's a clue there for people to, to churn and use.
Yeah.
People block them, which I understand some people are actually literally putting very obviously non-electric cars in some of those spaces in the main town lot. Point is to encourage people, electric cars to come to downtown, they know they can bring their car and charge and go to a restaurant. Uh, but at the library, it's a, it's a little different and Michelle reminds me that it was concerns when those force bases foregone in that they would lock out the lot.
It is a small lot.
Yeah, it's just the library.
So, so i- is there, well, I, I have a couple of questions, but I wanna open it up to the board first, David?
But the town manager said, I just wanted to hear what the police chief thought of that.
Okay.
I, I don't disagree with that, but it gets really confusing if we start excluding certain areas, um, not only for the public, but for the officers. I, I don't have an easy answer to that, um, a lot of the, a lot of the problems are, um, in the town lot because. The apartments around the village are, they're renting these apartments in there, they're using the town lot. As the parking that goes with the apartment they're renting, um, and that's what's driving a lot of, you know, the congestion in the town lot. And people are just automatically going to those, those spot, the electric vehicle spots there, um, so. Um, so that's the major problem, not as much at town hall or the library or the high school. Um, so, uh, you know, maybe we just make it the town lot at this point or, you know, it it, the only, the only problem is it causes confusion. We have to go back and do it over again if there's more charging stations put in. If you look at the way I wrote, uh, this proposed regulation, uh, we can further regulate it by sign, uh, by adding signage to the spot. So, if we went with this version of the regulation as written, I think we could further regulate it, which is signage at each individual site. So it, so it is doable, but if we do enact this regulation as written, we can water it down, if you will, with signage at individual sites as we see fit.
So Chief, could we, oh, sorry, Jack?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Nope. So Chief, could we put up, say, some signs at the library, for instance, say, this is for, you know, mixed-use vehicles at different points in time?
Yes.
That is, that is a tight spot.
Yeah, and if you, if you read the, um, if if you get into the nitty-gritty of the, uh, the verbiage that we use, that it would be further regulated, restricted, or, uh, with with actual signage for the site that that could be put in by us or or the town manager's office.
Thanks so much.
And my question is, so existing what we're voting on gives Police Department the ability to moderate it as needed.
Yeah, we, we have, there's, there's no, we have, there's no authority right now, uh, because these things didn't exist in nineteen ninety, uh, two thousand and one, when these regulations were, were, uh, first, first put out. Um, so we, we just, we, we're trying to catch up with modern times, if you will.
Well, I'm all in in giving the Police Department the authority to make that decision.
You making a motion?
Not yet. Let's have further discussion first.
If I could just ask one question. And Chief, I hate to ask you to be a lawyer, but it sounds like where you're going is what, what is a designated electric vehicle charging station space is something that would be dictated by signage?
Yeah, it'd have to be designated by signage and pavement marking, which ours are.
Okay, and you're comfortable with going in that direction, Chief?
I, that, that's my recommendation. I did a lot of research on this and this is the actual best practice, um, you know, that, that's out there.
And if we approve this, that gives you that flexibility?
It, it does. It, it, it gives us the authority. It also gives us flexibility that we can, we can adjust, um, without coming before the board to, to either, you know, further restrict it or water it down.
Thank you. I don't mean to split hairs. I just wanted to make.
No, no. And, you know, just, you know, overall, like you said, the, the town lot is really, is really tight and, you know, we have to start looking at, I know this is a little off topic, but, you know, we, we have to sort of look at the big picture, whether it's encouraging, you know, maybe making some spaces for golf carts, which were also electric, you know, encourage people during the summer to, to use golf carts. Um, uh, you know, similar to what they do in Florida, uh, put some premium spaces aside and, you know, it's the, the, the Massachusetts Registry of Motor Vehicles, um, you know, is, is now issuing, you know, plates for golf carts. It starts with the prefix LS, low speed. They can be used around town for the beach or government island and that may, you know, solve our volume problem to some extent, but that's maybe something that we could look into down the road.
Any, anybody else? No, I, I just, I have one clarifying question. The spaces are now striped. The pavement is striped. Are there signs up?
There are, just, just indicating it's, you know, for electric vehicles. It's similar setup to like, you know, almost a, um, a handicap spot because there's a safety zone in between so you can plug the cables in. Uh, so they, they are, they are hashed off.
Okay. I mean, because the easy thing to do for the library is have two spaces dedicated for electric and two of them flexible ba- based on, you, you know, demand. And then you kill two birds with one stone. Keep the integrity of the spaces. So you might have to paint over if those two flex spaces are marked.
I agree with you, as long as it's clear to the mother who's jumping out of the car with a screaming kid, trying to get into the Mama Steph concert, that that's what the space is.
Yeah. Right. That, that the two for the charging, yeah.
Yep.
I'd like to hear from, uh, Chris, town manager, would that modification be?
Yeah, we'll, we'll fix that. I, 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 I think we can, we can figure it out. I, I, it might be easier to to designate the ones that say electrical vehicles only, and then that might be easier and then maybe, you know, rather than. But we'll figure it. I, I, if the, I agree with the chief that we have to do something. They become popular and now people are also being disrespectful of them and 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 they're not going to be amenity to the community if they're not available.
Right.
Uh, so.
Okay.
Because the Police Department doesn't make signs, so.
No, no, we make the signs.
Yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So with that caveat, I think we make this.
Okay. Yes.
I, you know, Chief, first off, I'd really like to flesh out the golf cart idea. I think it's fantastic. I really, I'm serious. But secondly, um, you do have people that, for instance, and I don't know how many offenders we get, so, but you have someone who takes a, uh, charging station and they tend, maybe, we were running to that issue when they first started going, leaving their car overnight. You know, so they come out to a fresh charge. We, we discussed this at length about a year ago.
We put fees in place.
So, we got the fees in place. Good. And, um.
And, and, and we, 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 that is addressed in this proposed regulation where, you know, you can't, just because you have, you know, if, if Chris takes his Tesla and he's going on vacation for two weeks to Hawaii, he can't just leave it in the, uh, the spot even though he's not charging. So this will prevent Chris from abusing the system.
Well, I would make a motion approve.
Okay.
Change in regulation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chief. Well done.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll order the golf cart.
We're gonna be talking about that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's very popular in Florida and I, I really think it would work here and solve some problems and sort of be a cool thing for the summer.
Oh, on Beach Street when there's landscapers parked on every curb.
Oh.
It's crazy trying to get down on a Saturday. A golf cart would be great. Um, Chris. Chris, you'll work out the specific. Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Um, next on the agenda is the transfer. Um, the schools have requested from, from the Special Education Stabilization Fund. Uh, I assume they've already voted. It requires a vote of the school committee and a vote of the Select Board. I sent, I had Tracy send around the policy. I don't know how many people actually ever had it before. Um, and there was not a withdrawal last year because the policy states a two-year aggregate of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I also had Tracy send out just the first page of the school budget general fund and you can see, see how much special education is, um, a challenge for their budget. So they want this for this current year. Is that correct?
Correct. And there is, uh, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand in the fund right now.
Two ninety-nine and they want two hundred? Does that bring it below the funding floor?
It does, and we'll have to replenish, we can replenish starting in the special town.
Okay.
Refill.
Okay. I'm, I'm assumi- I'm assuming no one's here from the schools. No. And Michelle, all you got was a, a one-line email.
They did vote it. I understand it did vote this.
Yeah.
The request.
Yeah.
This will happen before town meeting. We got involved in just getting the budget done. And then they, I knew they would come back if they needed it.
Right. Right. Does anyone have any questions on this? No. No questions. Okay. Um, all right. So can I have a motion to approve the transfer of two hundred thousand from the Special Education, um, stabilization fund to the schools?
I would make a motion.
Second.
Okay, does this require a roll call?
No.
No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nobody? Okay. Okay, uh, next up, future agenda topics. Um, Chris sent out this afternoon kind of a schedule of meetings, which we can merge that into the same conversation. Um, ran a rather rigorous schedule in the last twelve months of, um, yeah, of meetings and, and it might not be bad to get back on, you know, more of a first and a, I, I don't know, the select board always first and third Tuesdays or second and fourth Tuesdays or?
I, you've never had a pattern that way, you could.
Okay.
You've never had a pattern like that, only because there's, there's random holidays and sometimes we work in and.
Right.
So it's usually been two meetings a month typically.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not always the first and third. Uh, because sometimes it's five weeks in a month and you don't want to have too many five, two days in a month.
You don't have three weeks in between meetings. Yeah, yeah. Um, and, and things, you know, Chris put on some dates here for a special town meeting, you know, when we need to set the date, um, elections, things along those lines, other things we have to, um, get going on. Uh, he did put a goal-setting, um, meeting workshop on June twenty-fifth where we, um, set Select Board goals, um, and Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager goals. Uh, we have the town hall working group we need to get off the ground. We have, um, some financial updates year-end that we're going to have to look at. Uh, there'll be committee and board appointments coming at us. Probably, I looked last year, I think we had them for six weeks in a row. Um, we haven't approved the stabilization fund policies yet for roads and sidewalks and schools. So we'll, we're going to need to get that done because they're going to start withdrawing from that in a few short weeks. I think advisory and capital has voted on both, but I don't believe we've voted on either one.
Town meeting has voted to authorize the spending, so that's.
Spending, right, right. But we should have a policy in place. We've had enough gyrations of it that I, I think, I think we're going to be fine. And then, um, Chris, we have your review. So we'll need to find out when Carolyn's available.
You, you might want to consider, again, I didn't want to throw a whole lot of meetings in July and August, but if you, I mean, you might want to have meetings that are maybe half-business and half-workshop kind of. Um, only because it takes time to eat, to, to deep dive into stuff, right? So, and there's always routine things that come through. Maybe you have half-hour business and then, or you come in a little early or something. I, I, the goal-setting session, I only put on the twenty-fifth just because I know you want to get going. Uh, it could be any time in late June or July. Typically, it's off, typically, it's, it's right here.
Right, usually over there.
We've gone to the light keeper before, too. It's, it's a public meeting, but you're not on TV.
Right, right.
So it's a chance for just to spitball things. So, we're going to be amenable to all this. I also know everyone has vacation schedules. That's the reason I just want to bounce dates off here early to figure out when you want to start deep diving. The other is that a special time meeting, unless you want to go really early because of the general election and presidential election is going to be in early November, the class can be slammed for weeks because of the early voting. If you have, so unless the time meeting is very early October, it really needs to be. And Thanksgiving is also kind of late. It's very late this year. It's not until November twenty-eighth. So it'd be easier to have a special in early December, I think.
And then have another election if we need another. If, if, if in special town meeting, there are articles for spending, then we would need to have an election in December, a month after the national election.
You know, you only want to put something on the, so you could put something on the general election, but you'd have to have that wrapped up by July.
Oh, okay. We're not gonna, no, that's not going to happen.
You know, I mean, there's no reason that. You don't have to have a special election unless you have a, a concrete plan that you're in.
Right, right.
People are used to having a special town meetings. Really, the first or second week of December is probably as late as you want to go.
Yeah.
But again, Thanksgiving is very late, so it's, it's not until November twenty-eighth this year. December second is later than we can. So.
So how, how does everybody feel about, you know, two meetings a month to start for the summertime?
I like that cadence. We can see how much we get done with that cadence. If we need to add additional meetings, we certainly have that flexibility. So I like the two meetings a month routine with the understanding that when something gets a little busy, we might have to add additional meetings.
Four. Done with the four, okay. Jack?
I'm, I'm agreeable.
David?
Yes, I think it gives the board the flexibility.
Okay. So today's the eleventh, so the twenty-fifth is two weeks from tonight. Okay.
So if you want to do a goal-setting session, can we just talk about potential attendance? We haven't talked about whether or not we just have vacations planned.
Right.
I'm not available on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
I'm happy to share my input for a goal-setting session with Chris Senior ahead of time and he can be my proxy, for lack of a better term, lowercase p, to share my input for the goal-setting session. Uh, but I also don't know if other members might not be available.
If we moved it a day or two, would that make it easier?
Nope. Going to be out of the country for two weeks.
Oh, for two weeks.
So don't blend it around me.
Okay. Um, because I wa- I was kind of thinking maybe attacking goals a little bit differently this year and, um, something that we, we did before is, is really a true workshop and, and we come up with general categories. We, we throw literally stickies against the wall and we come consensus on the goals that we want, we want to have. And I also believe strongly that I guess it's been pack, past practice that the, the town manager's goals are, are the goals that we come up with. I, I feel that the town manager, whether it's Chris or anybody or Michelle, should have their own goals as well. You know, and, and be accountable for their own goals. And we should be accountable for our goals. Of, of course, with the assistance of town, town hall staff, um, but our goals, we should be able to achieve, you, you know, not completely independently, but somewhat. Um, and the town manager should have goals for himself and, and the staff, um, that they can work on together. Um.
I, I think that's a good idea, but I, I, shouldn't the town managers and the assistant town managers' goals be congruent with the select board goals? How do we make it clear? I mean, obviously, we set the overall goals and then their goals are how they administer our goals or how they better support the board. Just see what I mean?
Yes, I, yes, I do. And I think that, um, it, it can be both. I, I, I mean, it's not that our goals aren't shared with the town manager. It's that the town manager might have goals independent of board business.
Right.
Okay, that he wants to work with staff, he wants to develop staff, whatever his or her own goals are. And I think that they should be able to develop those and be accountable for them in addition to, um, the, the support needed for, for the Select Board.
Oh, I, I agree. But maybe if they do that first, so we have a chance to look at them and then we can say, yeah, we like that, with that. Because I do agree with you that they are separate and I think it's a very good idea for them to have their own goal-setting.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, they can do it anytime they want.
I think we're talking about the same thing, just with slightly different.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
But I would say this, we have to have some real common goals, if we're going to, you know, if we're going to accomplish anything.
Yeah.
We got a lot done last year and that's working as a team. You know, I just think that we should continue the trajectory. And I do agree with you, throwing against the wall and coming up with. What we feel is a board. But I think it's important and inherent to approach it as a team. Whatever goals you come up with.
Okay. So, other thing, Chris, is the twenty-fifth. Work for everybody else?
Fine for me.
Can you zoom or no? Oh, it'll, it'll be two o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I'll just have a conversation with Chris ahead of time or.
Okay. Okay.
So we can assign you tasks.
What's that?
Never mind. You didn't have to hear that. We'll just assign you tasks while you're away. Look well for David over here.
I don't want to get too much logistics, but that said, do you want to do it here or do you want to do it at Lightkeeper's? I don't know what's it, you know?
I'm, I'm fine. I'm fine with here.
Okay.
Is everybody? Do you want to change it?
Just to change, can you?
Here, here is fine.
And are you going to self-facilitate this or do you want us to try?
Uh, I'm happy to because I've done it several times before. I'm happy to because I've done it several times before, so.
Whatever the board's preference is.
Yeah, yeah. And I think in terms of the rest of the meetings, I think we should pencil all of these in a- and then if we need to add or move.
And people, I I people may have vacations at times that can be locked away from work, whatever.
Yeah.
Something doesn't work, just like you you you're gonna need to vote this something and adopt this schedule, but it's I want to give it to you in time. Because the next couple of minutes are already set. The 25th is already a set date. And I think the meeting in July, I think the night is already set. Try try to have a meeting, a few meetings set for one year to the next, so because you always have to schedule stuff out.
There are times that a single board member can't be at a rate, so I think we can get by.
Yeah.
Then you'd have to think about, not for tonight, but you know, what kind of, when would a special be? And then also recommending that you move the time for annual back to the
Yes. Yes.
There was a good reason for pushing it to share.
Agreed. I would agree with that. Okay. All right, so 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 we have a schedule. We'll we'll assume this is the confirmed schedule. And if we need to add it, I mean, obviously, maybe content might shift around from week to week, but in terms of the actual dates, so everyone can put them on their calendars for when when they're available and in town to do so. And then Chris, you had presented to us at one point last year kind of a a forecast out, and I think that's probably a good exercise for us to try again to like lock in places where we want to have financial updates, lock in places where we want to have you you know, other boards and committees. I know I mentioned open space and rec. It's part of their charge to come make a presentation. I'd love to see what what they've been doing. Peb likes to come in, um so it we could put those in on an annual calendar and and just get it done.
So I'm such a, just brainstorming here, so financials monthly or quarterly?
I I know, I know the bylaw says monthly.
I mean, I can give you written reports every month. I mean, the questions.
No, I think, well, I don't want to answer for everybody, but for me, a quarterly report and if monthlies get distributed, I'm okay with that.
I would too. That's a good compliment.
Okay. And then in terms of committees.
Sometimes if the chairman of the committee, a lot of times there isn't a lot to report. So sometimes if the chairman can give us a succinct overview on a monthly basis, then if something serious and they want more in depth, but having them all come in here and spend an hour or so going over stuff that we already know is counterproductive. On the other hand, we what a monthly does is make sure they keep us up to date if there's anything.
So Jack, you you're doing a good job of walking both sides of the fence.
Yes, I
I lean in the direction strongly of the less frequent, more substantial reports.
Fine.
And in my experience, the monthly report, unless you've got a lot going on.
Oh, I would say just a a written monthly sent us.
Yes.
That's all I
As opposed to an agenda.
So I'm not split on the fence. I was getting a little uncomfortable sitting here.
You know, which kind of, and I know this is just supposed to be a reorg meeting, but it does bring up you know, uh something that I'm completely comfortable with with regards to open meeting law is that information can be disseminated to the entire board as information not to be discussed. And I think I have personally felt coming onto the board that there was a hes- hesitancy to do so because of a potential open meeting law violation. And as long as it's for information only, do not discuss. I think we can get a lot more information on email and maybe have to curtail some of the conversation about, you know, when you guys come in and say, well, for your information, this happened. If we get it on email, we don't need to discuss it during a meeting unless we feel like we need to discuss it. So I just want to to make that kind of sea change a little bit in how we operate in that it's okay, it's not a violation.
And we can also let you all those information post on the OneDrive. I mean, go look at it as you, if you're leisure, right? If there's like a packet of stuff that's we get random letters and notices from other
Right.
agencies.
Right.
Sharing it. The other thing I think you do want to schedule, I'm sorry. You haven't had a meeting with counsel a while to go over like general, a general litigation update?
Yeah.
You've done very specific case stuff and executive session. I do think you should think about having at least a biannual meeting with counsel. This is this the occasional random planning case or something that there was something in conservation that, you know, and I'm not saying that because there are. But um uh I I do think it's just helpful to do that from time to time, and I know we're gonna have a sub, as a member, you're gonna get a separate briefing. I just think about that, so. And let me know when you want to do that, because Carol, I have to book her in advance, so.
Would it be completely inappropriate to have her the same evening as your review and could be
No, no, it's fine.
July 9th? Is that all right with everybody?
July 9th, they should be back.
Are you okay with that?
I don't have the bylaw in front of me, but it's my recollection of the bylaw regarding finances when we talk about monthly reports. It wasn't just for the board, but it was also for public. Am I mistaken in that or is that?
I don't, I I don't know off the top of my head.
We have also post things on website too. I think want to get into our regular I think we need to go up with a nice, simple report. We give the board a ton of stuff, and people are looking at their ledger. I mean, all the, when we give you reports, they go up to the public too.
I mean, the 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 physical reports that we can get, we get on a monthly basis, that's fine, and then they have have the quarterly.
Yeah.
You know, questions, answers, and presentation, that's fine. I don't think we need that monthly, but at least the reports, because I mean, you know, way back in the day when I was a I was in a co-op job and worked for Norfolk County Advisory Board, we used to get the registry of deeds figures, bring them in every day, put that in the model, and then you would see every day as you, you know, variance gets lower and lower as you go through the budget, so you can see what's being spent, how it's being spent, and then you know, where the budget is and how it's going.
So here here's the the bylaw. Town director financial present to the board of selectmen on a monthly basis, inaccurate monthly expense status reported, the line line items in all town budgets, including months to date, year to date, figures to track, rate of expenditures, together with any encumbrances for which the town is obligated to pay in the future. Koh has a school committee shall cause to be prepared on a monthly basis. They already do that, blah, blah, blah. Town copy shall be made available to the public at the town clerk's office in the Paul Pratt Memorial Library. So that was section A. Okay, and then section B is the same thing on a monthly basis, inaccurate monthly income and expense status reported, the expenditures direct and indirect in all town revolving in enterprise accounts, including months to date, year to date figures, to track the rate of expenditures, school committee, blah, blah, blah. Uh copy shall be made available to the public at the town clerk's office in the Paul Pratt Library. So I think that
We were doing, we we started on other so we can certainly get back to something more regular again. Fortunately, physical presentations and monthly I mean, at some point, the bylaw should probably be updated to say, and on the town's website.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Fill a lot of trees.
Right, right. And 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 typically, reporting accelerates when there are issues and when everything is going okay and expenditures are are progressing as they should, then
Look at things regularly.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, so that's it. Town manager update?
Well, this was kind of all part of, sorry, so
Okay.
I just want to say thank you again. I I town meeting was a productive evening. Uh thank everyone, all the voice committees who make that go. That is absolutely the 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 most, I I I explained to colleagues why the parts of the country is always entertaining, but it's the most direct democracy. People get a chance to stand up, speak, and ask questions, and I'm most certainly happy. Right? And uh tennis is a little bit less than, well, but people are still mostly, well, certainly robustly sharing their opinions, so.
Ending was a little off key.
Uh but the budget passed unanimously, the capital plan passed unanimously. A lot of other, all the zoning work got got through, which was really critically important. A lot of great work was done on that, and I know there's more to come. We've been talking about that. So I just want to thank everybody who participated and all the voice committees make that happen, so.
I did have a question from a constituent. When does the noise ordinance bylaw take effect?
I I think it has to be approved by the, all bylaws have to be removed by the county general's office. Um and they have, I want to say it's 90 days to review.
Okay.
So it won't go to effect until the until the attorney general's office.
Okay, because there was a leaf blower at 8:30 at night, and there was some distress about that.
For everyone, we don't have a slot between the clients right away, but I bet it
Okay.
The law is on, it's now there, right? So it could be used at least uh to remind people that it's gonna be there and then and we're gonna keep, and the police will keep notes and
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I'll also say thank you on the zoning part to Tom Callahan. Yoman's job getting that that pass through flying colors anticipated a good change the upcoming town meeting. Except for a couple of twists at the end, but
What would we tell him anyway?
We got through it.
And and I would also attorney Farag here was also on that, and people who've never worked on zoning, it is extremely specific on language and a lot of work went into it. Um there are a lot of issues behind the scenes that have been very contentious in the past. They were dealt with beforehand. And people who had legitimate concerns, those concerns were taken care of. So I think that committee did a wonderful job, and it was so nice to see that it got passed.
I'll second that. Extend all our thanks to the committee.
Yeah. Yeah.
Officially, welcome. Uh we've already done some pre onboarding and we're excited to do more onboarding, so uh David and with our new school community member, um who just joined, um I know Lance is on for another term, and so and we're obviously anyone else who's been newly elected, so congratulations. A new planning board associate member too, wanted a writing.
Oh, wow.
Do one boarding. That's, and other than that, I I we are, the town is moving actively to fill the vacancy. The dance of the fox is retired.
Okay.
It's the director of elder affairs. Right? Because the acting director, we have a search in place, we've, I think, screened, process screening seven candidates. The the more resumes first round of seven. We have a couple of internal candidates at the moment, which is exciting, and we'll see where that all progresses. Let the board know when that goes, but that's, we are involved in the
Any news on capital?
Oh, one member resigned. Um Mr. Mike Dick resigned from the board.
No.
He did, he resigned this past week. So that seat is open, and I believe that one of the members has also expressed
From what I understand, there'll be another seat coming up when someone's term expires.
When what's that?
Uh there's been another member's terms running may not renew, may may not seat to stay.
Oh, that's terrible.
And then, and then we're in the process of going through all that to to post. We'll be posting, these are all the open vacancies and soliciting input and resumes. And again, it's a board, depending on how many, every board's been different with this, so if you want to do some interviews or things, if there's multiple people for seats, obviously, those can be baked into meetings, or you could do an offsite, and then I can say off scheduled Zoom or something. We'll see how.
Yeah, I think I think it depends on how many people apply for how many positions. And in, it seems like in the past, when we've had one spot and one candidate, we just approve the whole slate, but when there's been, I think CPC, there were two or three or four, some of these committees, and for me, it's helpful because I don't know a lot of people shockingly, but to to meet, you know, people who want to volunteer.
The tracker will have to, you know, there's a, there's one vacancy because of a term limit on the advisory.
Advisory, yeah.
So I think there's so there'll be potentially two seats on cap one on.
Has there been an informal group put together for, because it had been talked about, 135 King Street?
Then there was an informal group put together. Um the RFQs are due back at the end of the month. And those people that were identified are gonna help review all the RFQs, score them, so then we can award that piece. Once that's awarded, then I think you may want more of a formal working group when we move to the design phase, but this was just to get the
Okay.
But we're keeping fire and police all informed of that, right?
Yep. They were actually there. We had a site visit um last week, I think it was, or two weeks ago, and police and fire were both in attendance, so it was actually, it was great. We had nine different firms represented. It was exciting. It's great attendance.
I think working groups are a good mechanism because people can commit to something that's a a short term thing and kind of get a taste of, they like the volunteering or not like the volunteering and help support the needs that we have. Okay, um select board comments, Chris?
Uh the Kohasset fifth and sixth grade girls lacrosse team is playing in the state finals at Harvard University right now.
Oh, wow.
The game started at 7:30. I have no idea what the score is, but I hope they're doing well, and I wish them the best of luck.
Wow, awesome. Mr. Grady?
Well, I would like to first toot our own horn for a minute, everybody at this table. We got a lot done last year. We had a hell of a board, and I also, she's out there in television land. I want to thank Gene Billy Dipold for being an outstanding chair. And for every member on this board, and welcome, Mr. Farag. I think you're gonna be an outstanding member as well. And I think we'll get the same sort of thing done, but I do want to extend my thanks to Gene. And everybody who's serving on every committee. Again, I thank Tom, I meant it, everybody who does put in those like work to try to do what they feel is best for the town. It's my
Great, thank you. Jack?
I second what Paul said, and I think Gene did a extraordinary effective job, and I know she worked very hard. But I think so did the rest of the board. I don't know if the town understands how many special meetings that we had and extra meetings and methods. We made sure that David Frog did not understand that, otherwise he probably wouldn't run. Thank you, David. Now you know. As as far as staffing is concerned, the one, I've been contacted by a number of people over the senior commi- uh community and the president assistant director of the senior center has tremendous support, and I think we should always, as an institution, understand that when you have a clear path forward for staffers who work hard and do a good job and earn their way to the top spot, that that a lot of deference should be paid to that, and I know that contacted by a large number of the senior community who feel that the assist- the assistant director would be good at that position, pending, of course, the the normal procedure. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Of course.
That I forgot. I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Ellen Maron, elevation to chair. I look forward to another good year.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Maybe it'll make me work less.
She's getting to
Work, work less, not not this work less. Um thank you, Paul. It's an, it's a honor and after the accolades, which I I wholeheartedly echo for Gene, um big shoes to fill. But I'll do my best. David?
Thank you. Last but hopefully not least, I just want to thank the board for tonight, and I'd like to thank the voters for the last election for electing me. I take it very seriously. For those who don't know, my name is David Farag. Lived in town here almost all of my life. My grandmother lived here. My mother was a graduate of Kost High School. I was a graduate of Kost High School, and all three of my children attended the Kost school system. When I ran, I had, after being on a number of town boards, conservation commission for a number of years, town hall building restoration committee, the original one. Um I was a lot younger back then, and then we're still trying to restore it, so hopefully, hopefully, this will be the 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 last time that we will have to deal with it in the next few years here. But I ran on three major things, which was to protect the town's character, to enhance the edu- educational excellence of the town of our schools, and to also improve the senior citizens' quality of life in town. So those are the three major things that I ran on and that promise that I'll keep going forward. And I'd just like to, again, thank everybody who came out to vote last weekend, which was a beautiful weekend, a tough weekend to vote, and thank you
Uh, last weekend, which was a beautiful weekend, a tough weekend to vote, and thank you for all the people who also voted early, uh, which was probably the majority of the ballots as well, I look forward to working with this board. Uh, and, and with all the other town boards and the nonprofits and the citizens of town to move Coasit forward. And hopefully, bring our town government into the twenty first century, so. Thank you.
Thank you, well, welcome, David. Welcome, so, um, there's no topics not reasonably anticipated at this point in time, so I'll take a motion to adjourn at eight twenty nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.